Frost.
Here.
No.
Here.
Ben Yosen.
Here.
Char.
Here.
Orson.
Here.
Moon. Oh, here. And Ty. Here. They're all here.
Excellent. Is there any course on?
None.
Are there any visitor statements? Dan, obviously state your name and your village, please. And please limit your comments to three minutes, if you don't mind.
That feels like a Dale Carnegie speech. I'm compelling. Happy New Year to everybody. Daniel Vishny, Buffalo Grove. What I want to talk about tonight is going to make a bunch of us uncomfortable, but it's important to talk about it. Carolyn Penta. Everybody knows that name. She started in an organization, Bee Gees Pride, which I've backed and supported as awareness in the Anne advocacy and the LGBT community. I recommended people to go to the parades and whatnot. And I think it's been a great social pause. But what has devolved in terms of her involvement in the community and the toxic things that are going on, what she's doing, she's become from being a stalwart in the community to being very divisive. Case in points. Number one, why is this important in talking to this board about it? She's a teacher in one of our feeder schools, District 96, and her husband teaches at this institution. So a few things that are going on with her from reading and just understanding and being disappointed in terms of what's going on. First of all, she's the defendant in a current lawsuit that she is accused of slandering a dance studio owner in Buffalo Grove. Number two, her organization has been instrumental in putting together all ages drag shows. I don't care whether those exist or not, but it certainly goes beyond the realm of Bee Gees Pride and the parade and the good thing that she started in an organization I believed in. Okay. Thirdly, there was supposed to be some sort of event at the Displanes Theater in which some group was going to talk about protecting children in schools, probably a little bit conservative bent to it. But her organization was instrumental in getting that canceled. The event was going to be February 8th at the Displanes Theater. I've been at the Displanes Theater for the great musical acts and stuff. They've been open there for about a year and a half now. I've met the person who operates that, Ron O'Nasty. He's a non-political guy, very involved in the Italian-American community. And he got threats, and some of them came from Penta's organization. So I want to say, just from a standpoint, that everybody be aware and let's get all out of our groupthink type of thought that what her organization stood for was great and I supported it. What she's turned into is a very divisive, toxic character in our community. And she teaches at one of our feeder schools, District 96. So let's just be aware of that and rather than treat it carefully and understand the importance of this. And everybody, don't go into groupthink and say that I'm not grandstanding. She has become divisive and this is something that her organization, when it started, I fully supported it. And now I'm extremely disappointed. And everybody should have their eyes and ears open rather than just sitting in a corner and everybody agreeing and being conformist. This person is divisive and toxic. And she should be dealt with, including you guys talking to her because she's at one of our feeder schools. And so get with the program, you guys. Some of you might be even friends with her. Her organization, when it started, I thought was one of the greatest things that happened in this community. She has gone well out of her lane in terms of what she's doing. And you guys better wake up because if not, she's going to continue this harmful charade. Thank you.
Another comments?
Hi, I'm Jodi Mosk. And I have been a paraprofessional at Stevenson.
What's your last name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jodi Mosk.
M-O-S-S?
M-O-S-K.
M-O-S-K.
And I'm from Brown Park.
Thank you.
I have been a paraprofessional at Stevenson for close to nine years. I'm happy here. I love my job and I love going to work every day. I've worked in many different departments. I am not as off the cuff as Dan, so excuse me for reading. I've worked in many departments in Special Education Department. I'm supporting our teachers and staff and students. I work hard and I have long days. I provide seven instructional English and math classes every day. So I'm a student for seven of eight periods each day and I only have a four to seven minute break. I tell you this because teachers ask for me to work in their classrooms. They know I have a good work ethic, I'm professional, and they can count on me to show up every day. I build a wonderful core with the teens in the classroom. And I've been lucky enough to follow most of these students for the four years that they're here in their high school experience. But I'm not alone. Each of these Stevenson paraprofessionals do the same thing. They're devoted to our students and Stevenson High School. They're experienced and sought out by students, faculty, and staff as mature and trusted adults. They're committed and dedicated to their jobs. Yet, we have been extremely disappointed to learn that we are not valued by the school administration at its highest level when it came to the market wage adjustment. When the ELC was brought to Stevenson High School, we were asked to train and to teach new paraprofessionals. It was an additional task assigned to us and we did so without hesitation. We were supportive and we were welcoming. And we were glad that they were given a salary to match ours so that we can each work on an even playing field. This year, they were given another raise. So even the newest and most inexperienced ELC employee is now earning more than we are. Yet, we are still asked to train and teach these employees. Where is the justice and the fairness in this situation? We were asked to pledge our loyalty and commitment to Stevenson as employees. I believe we have done so with devotion. We similarly expected the same degree of commitment and loyalty from the school towards us as employees. We were told we could leave our employment at SHS and go work for ELC. However, we have been and intend to remain loyal to Stevenson as employees. If we leave Stevenson, we are not guaranteed our benefits that we have earned. We could be pulled to work at other schools and we will lose our seniorities. Rather than being rewarded for our diligence, commitment, and professionalism, we are instead being treated as unvalued and expendable. We respectfully request that you include the SHS, Special Education Paraprofessionals, in a market wage adjustment package and foster an equitable compensation package relative to our ELC employees and colleagues as a reflection of what is right, just, and morally correct. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Santori. I'm from Lake in the Hills.
Just, just, please say your last name, Nancy.
Sure. S-A-N-T-O-R-I.
Thank you.
I am a retired educator and I am currently working as a Stevenson paraprofessional. And I had assisted through work here in Sports Gap as a security person for 17 years. My niece and two of my nephews went to this school and graduated. One of them is on the spectrum and has been in the Special Ed Department. I came to this school knowing about it and I wanted to be a part of the Stevenson family, which is a term we use a lot here. And a few years ago, that was disruptive as far as my feelings went because it seemed, as Haslam said, that the contributions that we made, especially some of the paraprofessionals who were instrumental in helping adjust to the new program after we broke from CEDO, developed a certain amount of expertise. They also have, including myself, a great deal of career experience and education that is no longer required of the paraprofessionals. And that's because of what the market will bear right now. I personally have been teaching for over 30 years. I have two national degrees. I also have, in the state of Illinois, a certified teacher in four areas, very 1612. I've also worked in HR, publishing, and I also worked for many years with the elderly with dementia. I had a big basket of skills to bring to the school and it was welcome when I came. Now I work side by side with people who do not have to have anything but a high school degree. And we have to be their mentors. And yet, we are not considered equal to them in terms of equitable pay. And this is an important fact. We have a mission statement for our graduates about the kind of people we want them to be with certain kinds of characteristics to lead to character. Part of that would be respect for others and then understanding what people do and what includes fair play. And so what I am asking is that we are treated with those same characteristics that we want our students to have. We want embraced by the school and the administration so that we also feel like we are worthwhile and not dispensable. We are a linchpin to this program. Not the only ones, but you try running the Special Ed program without the paraprofessionals. And I think you would find that that is very, very difficult to do. Thank you for listening and seeing another viewpoint. Thank you.
Awesome. Take heed. Now we get to... Did you want me?
Yes, please. My name is Yolanda Pilch. I'm a licensed paraprofessional. And I've worked in the Special Education Department for 22 years, including summer school. I've lived in the district for over 20 years. My daughter graduated from Stevenson in 2015. No, 2005, she said. Don't say 15. That makes her laugh. I am the recipient of the 2015 State Award, Those Who Excel. I along with another teacher started the Bright Lights Candle Company. I've sponsored clubs such as the Hip Hop Club and the Orgamica. And during my tenure here, I've worked with some of the most qualified, compassionate teachers and paraprofessionals that I've had the pleasure of working with. With that being said, I respectfully request that you include the SHS paraprofessionals in the market wage adjustment package and foster an equitable compensation package that's relative to our ELC colleagues as a reflection of what is right, just, and morally correct. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Wonder what village do you live in?
I live in Buffalo Grove.
Thank you.
Nancy, what village do you live in?
I live in Lake in the Hills.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I could have one more letter. If you guys will accept it.
Sure, sure. Now we get to Alex.
Hi, everyone. Hope all of you guys had great winter breaks. So one of my, I'm just going to share this. One of my New Year's resolutions was this year to just try out new things. So over winter break, I went to South Berries with my friend and we did goat yoga together for the first time. So when I was in my downward doggy position, I just saw goats running around. I was like, oh, this is cool. And then one just suddenly jumped on me. And then he was just chilling there for a solid minute or so. That was really cool. And then we got pictures. Like, I actually pooped on one of my friends. But apparently that's good luck. So hopefully we'll be secure with the A's and the good college aspirations this year. I think I need to go to goat yoga more often. Just secure that. But just wanted to share something fun. But starting off with academics, we had a lot going on at the end of last semester along with stuff occurring this semester. The past eight or so days that we've had at school. So for example, Catalyst specifically actually met with Congress and encouraged them to pass the No Pain Act, which promotes the use of non-opioid pain management prescriptions. And that was just a really cool experience to see a club at Stevenson High School make such a broad impact and use their voice in order to promote something they believe in. And then with Math U specifically, they did really great at the North, at their conferences and currently ranked first in the North Suburban Math League, leading by 878 points, which is an incredible lead. I did never know Math U was so strong. But this just goes to show the matter of determination Stevenson students put into whatever they are passionate about. And then another example of where students use their voice was a specific Stevenson student who was selected as a Project Soapbox finalist last month during the NICA challenge. And that's a challenge that encourages students to use their voice in order to strengthen civic and political life. So this student specifically spoke on something that was passionate and that he believed in. So it was just cool to see how his voice was used and he became a finalist. It was going to show that people were listening to him and were encouraging him to use that voice. So with athletics specifically, I mean, there's only been like a couple of days of this semester, but it goes to show like a lot of victories have been taken home from Stevenson teams. So for example, girls' basketball, they placed third at the Dundee Crown, the Camerani, that's a bummer, classic tournament over winter break. Placed over there is the Stevenson cheer team. And they actually took the championship at the North Suburban Conference Championship. So I believe they are heading to state soon, which is pretty awesome, along with the Stevenson dance team. It's a lot of people and teams heading to state. So with arts specifically, there's been a lot of involvement with getting middle schoolers educated about what Stevenson has to offer. So theater, different fine arts department individuals visited the feeder schools like Acapulco, St. Luke's, St. Mary's. Speaking about their specific department, what it has to offer just to gauge student interest and show that Stevenson has a plethora of different experiences that can entame into anyone's interest, whether they're into photography, or theater, or music. Just educating them on the different array of arts activities offered to them. Okay, so the PWC move challenge. I didn't catch these students doing this. I didn't ask them to do it. It was actually fun because this morning I walked into stats and then I was like, you guys look like you have to do some pushups. And then they just started trying to see who could do the most. I think one of them got to like 40. So that took up a good 10 minutes of our stats class. But it was a great opener. And then maybe even do some statistical significance, like the normal model of the average number of, okay.
There you go. That was good.
Yeah, there you go. Same education. And that's some squats. I know it's jumping deck squats and pushups. So just a great way to get the Stevenson community involved in exercise. I mean, this is a little off topic, but NHS is currently planning a running/walking. We're going to emphasize the walking because the running people is staring. Running factors staring people. But just to raise money through a health-related activity and that's going to be our spring project for the year. Okay, so going back to A-Grader involvement, FNP recently held incoming freshman night. I personally was giving out tours and it was really cool to see the questions both students and parents had. It's kind of funny to see how shy A-graders were and just think back to when I was an A-grader, taking a tour through Stevenson and how so much has changed. Like, there wasn't the PWC, for example. This is how Stevenson is involved in general. And some of the questions were mainly like relating to food. Like, oh, where can I get acai bowls? And I was like, yes, we do have that now. But yeah, it was just fun to get them around and to see what questions they had about Stevenson and what piqued their curiosity. Also just give tours with my fellow FNP friends. And then on to student experiences. So if you're wondering, that picture on the left is taken in my advisory. We try to do like a special party for them every two or three months. So this is one of the parties we had just so they can have a day to decompress and have fun and enjoy what everyone loves, some good, nice, unhealthy food. So yeah, that's just that picture there. So some student experiences relating to the start of the semester is, for example, number one. This student's a freshman and he said, I'm super excited to start driver's ed. Being able to drive is one of the best freedoms and I can't wait to get my license so I can drive my friends. I remember that feeling. It was pretty awesome, even though it was during COVID. I think my first place I ever went to by myself was the car wash. Yes, I wanted to go for a car wash. I love seeing the bubbles. Still love seeing it today. And just the whole process is just really majestic. So I mean, I tried to do it for my car's health. My car's name is Raquel, by the way. For Raquel's health and just for my own entertainment. On to student B. So this student's a senior and she said, as a senior, prom is such a beautiful tradition and I'm so excited to go prom dress shopping with my friends and commemorate the end of high school at the dance. I know a lot of people are already getting their dresses. It's just crazy because prom's been brewing on since I haven't even thought about it. But I guess it's the time to get things done before all the dresses are sold. And I don't know what I'm doing. And then another student said, I'm looking forward to activities like spring playing and sporting events where the Stevenson community will unite and have fun with AP tests and SAT coming up. These activities will definitely help me unwind, enjoy the rest of the school year. So yeah, Stevenson offers a wide map of large events like spring playing, Winter Fest, the event that NHS is about to plan and host. So there's a lot of different opportunities to, you know, have fun and celebrate the end of the year. And then this one, personally my favorite for the last part. I'm excited for the upcoming large school events that bring the student pride together, like Winter Fest. Since my last semester at Stevenson, I want to make the most of my time left by attending senior showcase and participating in senior assassin. I'm kind of scared, honestly, for that. I'm going to be working out at the gym and then someone's just going to squirt me from behind and I'm going to be confused. But I'm very determined to win. So we're just going to have to watch out. I guess that's just the fun of the end of the year for seniors and it's just a way to, you know, do something fun and crazy. One of the things on my New Year's resolution before, you know, come to the end here and have to move on to the rest, next chapter of our life, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Alex?
Hey, what is senior assassin? My son's a senior assassin.
Oh, yes. So senior assassin is this where you, like, everyone puts this money where it participates and there's just this large collection of money. And then you're secretly inside a person. That person doesn't know you have them and you have to try to like squirt them with a water gun. For immunity, you have to wear like snowballs.
Right.
Yeah, the people, yeah, people are, you see people who write these things. Like, they will tell you all the information that's false. So you have to, every man for themselves. But it's just an exciting mission.
Alex, I have to thank you as always. It's great. You not only informed us some things that are going on with the academics and athletics, but you give us a sense of how kids in school feel. We really appreciate that.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. See you next month. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Tonight, we, as we always do, we begin our meetings with, probably the most important part is hearing from our teacher colleagues around one of our goals, which is social-emotional learning. And tonight, we have members of our multilingual learning division here. And Justin, how about I introduce you? Justin Fisk, of course, the director of that division. We'll introduce his team. How about that?
Thank you. Wonderful to see everyone tonight. I'm excited to introduce six members of our team. We have seven members altogether. Here's Gina Barron, joined us this year, was a student at Stevenson. And I actually got to know Gina when she was a student years ago. To Gina's right, it's Patriots and US. To Patriots, right, it's Nancy O'Malley. We have Stephanie Fisher, Sam Figaro on the back, and this is Beth Morgan. Joining us tonight is Jory Greenhill, who's also a fantastic teacher. So I've been handing this quicker.
It's a lot of power there.
Should we stand over there?
Yeah, sure. See, how's that really?
Come on out. So they're in this picture as well as some of the others. I'll hand it over to Ben in just a moment. But to give you an idea of our sequence of courses, Spanish III is technically taken by sophomores, although you'll have students sophomore, junior, and senior like that course. It's our second largest course by enrollment in our division. Spanish II being our largest currently. Spanish II, III, I won that.
Skip to speak, Margaret.
I'm sorry. Spanish III is one of our, is our largest team currently. It has the largest enrollment. It's mostly sophomores. I'm going to hand it over.
Okay, so looking at the data and where are we now in our SCL journey and what we're working on? We use the Panorama Student Voice Survey to see our, identify our areas of strength and areas for growth. One thing that we saw as an area of strength was the change since spring 2022. We saw a positive increase in all areas when usually you see a negative or a decrease in all of those areas. Because usually after the fall, you've only been together for a semester. You haven't had as long to connect with one another, so those scores are a bit lower. But we saw an increase from the fall, or from the sprint to the fall. In terms of our areas for growth, we identified valuing of subject, obviously as it is our lowest area. So something that we wanted to work on. But classroom belonging is something that we felt passionately about and that we feel we're connected to one another. So under classroom belonging, there's a variety of questions. We felt the one that, or the one that we felt the strongest about was how well do people in your class understand you as a person? We thought that if they could make connections to one another and learn about each other's lives and each other's culture with curiosity and not judgment, that they would feel more connected to one another. And in terms of valuing of subject, our lowest question, in which students responded favorably, was how often do you use ideas from this class in your daily life? And we realized that maybe there is a gap in understanding of, not how often do you use Spanish in your daily life? Because they might not feel like they have the skills to do that. But how often do you use, you know, the skills that we learn at class? So interpersonal speaking, are you asking people questions? Are you getting to know them with curiosity and not judgment? How do you use that in your daily life?
So having identified those two data points, our next step was to really think about how do we break this into what we're doing in class? Because we didn't want it to feel like it was something that was traditional or added on. It's something that naturally flowed within our curriculum. Unfortunately, with world language and this sort of secondary, second language acquisition, culture is naturally part of the language. You can't separate those two. And two areas that we wanted to focus on were cultural comparisons because it allows students to really delve into the target language culture, but also give them avenue to think about their own culture. So here we have a definition for you guys regarding intercultural community competency. What really is important is the idea of the attitudes, knowledge, skills, and the idea of others. So gaining perspective of others, then giving them opportunities to think about their own perspective. And an easy way to really think about this is the idea of windows, mirrors, and doors. It's the idea of looking at other cultures through windows, learning about how it is they live their daily life, and then using those lived experiences that you're witnessing to reflect in your own, so that we can really kind of compare. How is my life different than in others? And then with those knowledge, with that knowledge, then thinking about... And then with those knowledge, with that knowledge, then thinking about how you use those skills to actually walk through the door and interact with people, understanding that learning is one aspect, but then doing is ultimately what kids to learn, to function with and evolve.
And as we were assessing students' ability to make cultural comparisons between their own and the target culture, we noticed that their responses were kind of shallow because they weren't understanding, you know, the different aspects of culture or even their own culture. A lot of them didn't identify necessarily strongly, they didn't have strong ethnic, um, strong ethnic background or strong ethnic ties. The idea of culture was very confusing to them. So we talked about how there are different aspects of culture, such as your generation. Gen Z has their own culture. So we talked about different generations and they had a good time, you know, I said, just give it to me, what are all the stereotypes within the generation? I was like, I'm a millennial, go ahead, tell me all the millennial stereotypes. We talked about millennials, their parents, Gen X, et cetera. So we said, being a gen, you know, being a part of a generation is your culture, you know, being a part of the Stevenson community, we have a culture here, or even the Midwest has a culture. So you could think about it that way, too. So and the different aspects specifically were products, practices, and perspectives. So what are the products of your culture? It could be things from your religion, right? Maybe you have some sort of candle or statue, but it's also technology products of your culture. Do you have a ring in your house? Do you have an Alexa? Do you have a cellphone? Even putting up decorations is a cultural product. Practices of their home culture. So we've been transferring the idea of cultural products, practices, perspectives to every unit. So this is the home one we did, thinking about how you greet certain family members, that's culture. Or are you allowed to study in your room or at the dinner table? Can you wear your shoes in your house or do you have to take them off? And as they were sharing these, they were having really big discussions like, oh, you could call your parents by your first name, I'm getting so much trouble. And you're allowed to eat in your room, that's crazy, I have to eat in my dinner table. So just the idea of being curious, understanding, you know, that they're all, it's just different, right? So how these products and perspectives, I'm sorry, products and practices reveal what your perspectives might be. And then so to work on, we wrote a report on, in the home unit, on what were the specific products, practices, and perspectives of their house. They made slides, they recorded an audio, and they were able to listen to and share and learn about each other. And working on student-teacher relationships, we showed an example of our families and how even though we were both, well, this is my blood and family, how we were both raised in the same area, we realized coming together that family cultures can clash. So for example, you know, in his family, they would wait until everyone was sitting down to eat the meal, whereas I would make people eat right away. Just how even though we're in the same area, cultures can be so different.
So this home unit was our first try at like trying to incorporate the products, practices, and perspectives with the kids. And so we did a lot of modeling and a lot of examples like Stephanie talked about, but this was kind of the fun part and watching how they interact and how they use their Spanish, because we want them to use their Spanish and like internalize it and grow that way. So after we had all these bazillion examples, then they were asked to, well, okay, so what's your story? What's your experience? How do you connect? And so in Spanish, they started to write and we went from words to concepts to sentences. And it was so cool because, for example, as Sam mentioned, we want them to reflect on themselves, but also build that community and help and engage with one another. So they're writing, but they're social creatures and they sit in their cooperative groups and they talk out, you know, they talk through their ideas. And as they're doing that, they're learning about one another and like, that's so cool. And like, really, you, you know, your house has, you know, these kinds of decorations and these colors and it's symbolic and it was like this, this wonderment. It was just a really neat and exciting classroom environment. So this was kind of like their organizer. We do a lot of scaffolding and building with their minor skills. So this was the organizer and, and then we want to work on their more formal language. So after they had their ideas organized, we worked on presentational writing, which is a more formal, you can see like a very formal, organized paragraph, and they're doing it in Spanish. And it's so neat and they're using now the productos, prácticas, perspectivas, the language that we want them to get in their own communication. So it was really exciting and this was our first try at it. So then after the home, we did technology and they, they love it. You can hook anything to culture and they're just like, yeah. And classes, it's not like grammar and vocabulary.
So alongside the writing of the students who did it, we also, as part of presentational, the verbal aspect, we asked students to record on the platform Flipgrid, a brief minute, minute and a half kind of explanation about their own products, practices, and perspectives. And through that platform, then students were able to listen to and share their ideas alongside of their peers. So these specific sentences here were the framework we provided them to compare and contrast and leave feedback to their peers. So something like, my culture is similar to yours because also, or mine is different because, and examples, et cetera. And giving them that framework to make connections and also share differences with one another that is trying to emulate that non-judgmental sort of practice that we're asking them to begin to look at cultures that are not their own with. So by comparing and contrasting this way, they were able to share, oh, we have some similarities and that's really neat, or this is different, but now I can see a perspective. So alongside that, keep going the wrong way. We asked them to do a reflection survey after this was, this activity was completed, thinking about, how are you thinking about these products, practices, and perspectives now, which we identified that aligned well with, and in the language and the idea from the student voice survey under valuing of subject? So how often are you using those ideas from class into daily life? So how are you looking at the day-to-day things that you see outside of our classroom through the lens of products, practices, and perspectives? Also, the new understandings question, so essentially, how well, mirroring that language, how well do you and your classmates understand each other? Or how do others understand you as a person through the new understandings you gain from sharing with one another? These are some of the student responses that we got from giving these reflection surveys to our class. So a lot of the time, mostly, it seemed that students got a lot out of being able to have this structured space to share and compare and contrast their experiences with one another. So never really having thought about what family and culture values were until now. Different, some have different practices and some might seem unusual, but that's important to respect others' cultures and learn more about them. So overall, I would say that was a positive outcome for the students and how they feel that they can now start to look at these ideas in their day-to-day life. And this was only just the beginning of doing this in our class. Thank you.
Yes, that is the beginning. So now we look towards the future and our division and all divisions across Stevenson, as you probably see every month, are very high-performing teams with a lot of gusto to keep improving and reflecting and we are no exception. We're always striving for more and never really satisfied with where we are. But it is important sometimes to take a step back and acknowledge what the accomplishments we have and celebrate how far we've come over the years to incorporate classroom belonging so that kids feel like they're part of a community every day that they come to class, as well as to valuing our subject, which, you know, sometimes we have a struggle with other electives out there. So we're always trying to make sure that they see why they should be here and continue to learn a language, because you can't just take it one semester or one year and get very much out of it, right? So we're fortunate to keep Spanish III and they come with a really good foundation that we can then push them to do activities like these. They have a lot under their belt and they can use the target language to create connections, learn more about their own, and explain about their own culture, as well as their classmates' cultures and the target culture. So we recognize that we have still plenty of work to do. We strive to, you know, keep working, but we want to make sure we are making our lessons relevant to the students and interesting and like, which is like fun, not just sitting and getting grammar and vocabulary. It's of course very important building blocks, but bringing everything. So on any given day, we're doing so many activities in any of our classes. This team consistently looks at the student voice survey to see what they're telling us and to see where we could, you know, improve. And hopefully the spring 2023 data will be the best yet. So, and we thank you for having us here and listening to our discussion about Spanish III.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Can I, may I? I'm so sorry, this is for half. Hola. One of the most embarrassing moments, as I thought I was on time, I realized I'm a parent and won't say my name, some of you know me. I was supposed to be 7:30 AM and I'm sitting in your meeting. And I, oh my, I'm sorry. I, I'm like ready to cry. I am so sorry. You're probably like, what is she? Who is this lady and what is she doing here? I'm so sorry. This was fascinating. Oh my gosh, I'm like, I'm love, can I say? I feel terrible, I don't even know who to email, then I missed the parent. Okay, I don't.
We'll get you out there next month.
I'll get you.
Thank you so much. This is very funny and embarrassing at the same time, but it's okay, I say. Yes, thank you. Muchas gracias.
So I'm a little confused. So you showed at the beginning the improvement that you had from the spring to the fall and you mentioned how that was unusual because of the less amount of time that students attended. And then you moved into what your, you know, the questions you were trying to address and improve. So do you know why it was improving from the spring to the fall? Because this isn't reflect, the results you had in the fall did not reflect the work that you were describing today. This is what you've done since the fall's voice surveys, right?
Yes. So we analyzed this data here and, well, I guess we kind of identified something that we were currently doing or what some of us were currently doing and we felt it really tied to these areas of valuing of subject and classroom belonging. And then we made this decision as a team to say, these structures, these strategies are clearly working based on those survey results. So how can we continue to do this from, you know, the house unit to the technology unit to the wellbeing, health and wellness unit? So something that we are embedding in all of our units.
So this is building on what you were do, I'm sorry.
So in addition to that, though, I think across the team that we're all on, this is something we've seen. These are particular areas of Panorama that we've seen, Spanish II, III, IV, II, III accelerated, that are areas of need. So.
Yeah, it's cool.
And it's cool why. So the benefit that we're seeing and that I think at least that we're going to get is the learning we're achieving here in this group is going to correlate to any of the group we're part of. So I'm part of Spanish, you know, what am I part of? Three, four accelerated this year, two new teams this year. So three, four accelerated this year. So I know that what I'm learning from this group and those lessons are moving on and anybody else in this team. So that's the one benefit of doing something like this and it was a wise choice to take a large team to do this, because that learning then disseminates rapidly elsewhere, as opposed to starting with a small team that have lessons and then act later on. But just to validate like why these two, it's because we've seen it on all the teams.
Was that your question, why those two, or why do you think there was such a big increase from spring to fall? Is that your question?
Let me step back for a second. So you've been doing a number of SEL improvement techniques throughout and you saw this improvement, which is pretty significant from the spring to the fall. And then what you described tonight, then with the new things that you've been working on since you took those surveys, and those are the examples that you were showing us. So we won't know until you finish.
Are you going to monitor data, I think, to really kind of tell if it was just a blip or if it's something that's truly called in as a result of what the actions were making? So time, time will tell us.
Okay, thank you.
But I also think there's been a good growth from the spring to last year to fall, because we are kind of vertically aligned, right? And Spanish II is doing a lot of these things and then, you know, who's transferring to Spanish III. So I think as a division, we've done a really good job of transferring these ideas vertically.
There's credit to Justin, that's our director, giving us time last semester to have a really, a really different vertical direction. So I mean, that having 20-some Spanish teachers, at times it feels like written pages, so him giving us that space to really kind of make sure that, before we go into some curriculum time, that we can really have a dialogue and understand what are our actual needs moving forward, so we're more thoughtful and intentional with the work we're doing with the students.
And when they're having these conversations about their culture in their house, is it in Spanish ideally? Like they're speaking regionally in Spanish or is that a place there in Spanish? I'd say example, that we started the whole concept of this first in the beginning of the semester in English, and once they got that concept, we're able to start scaffolding and adding Spanish. So it's an opportunity for them to practice as well.
Yes, and I think Pasha had a really great example of that in terms of all the new activities we do that make them feel comfortable with wanting to talk.
So what I liked about it was that, sort of examples of their written work, so they're really using their Spanish and writing and, but then you spoke about that they also recorded so that you're actually able to hear them speaking, their thoughts, their words, and whatever. So I think that's another, it's another way to, to decide whether we're learning something and getting good at it.
I'm not.
May I ask a question?
No.
You know, this, this has come up in the past. Actually, the public, let me step back for a second and explain. So the public comments section is where people who are not on the board are able to make comments to the board. And we're asking questions of folks during the course of the meeting, it's really for the board to interact. But I invite you to stay after the meeting and ask questions if you want to talk after the meeting, and that way we won't interrupt the meeting. I want to be consistent.
I appreciate that, thank you. Because I'm new, yeah.
No problem, thank you. Then the other. Thank you very much, thank you.
All right, so, so thank you to that team. And that brings us to personnel section. You can see the graduate program approvals, the human resource report is part of our consent agenda. We will not need an executive session following the meeting. We did have one prior to the meeting. And that takes us to the business section, the first item, Sean, we discussed previously, but maybe give us a brief reminder.
Yeah, if you recall, in December, the board took action on all of the summer of the bids resulting from the work for the summer of 23, 24 projects. The one of bid that wasn't ready at the time, because we were trying to drum up more support or competition for a better price, was in fact the mechanical bid. We ended up holding that bid after the board, after the December board meeting. And while we did get more bidders, the lowest responsible did come in pretty much right on our estimated target of $863,000. And so we are recommending that the Board of Education award the mechanical package, including the two bid alternates that go with it for the summer 23 and summer 24 work to amber mechanical at a cost not to exceed $863,000.
Can I have a motion, please?
Someone?
A second.
A second.
Any questions for Sean in the bid?
Is this in line with the budget?
Yep. Yep, it's actually just like, you know, the budget.
I was, I looked at the materials and the, but the alternates are actually not alternates to this or to addition.
In addition to the, yeah. So there are, there are instances where we have an additional idea for something, but we're not sure what it would cost, so we kind of put it as an alternate. but we're not sure what it would cost. So we kind of put it as an alternate onto the bid package. And if the pricing makes sense, then those are projects that we, or continuation to that as well. And that's, in this case, that's.
And it has the potential to reduce the cost for twenty-two.
Correct.
Any other questions?
And I will say also that this eliminates the supply issues because we're taking care of ordering it now to a smaller school. With mechanical equipment, it's still ten to twelve months.
Would you pull the board please?
No.
Hi.
Beniosse.
Hi.
Sal.
Hi.
Um, Corson.
Aye.
Moons.
Aye.
Tyre.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
Carries seven to nothing.
Okay. The next item is the approval of the support staff wage market committee comparison. So, uh, just a, a little background, as everybody recalls, in the most recent support staff contract, uh, we did have a, a clause that, um, allowed us to work with the Support Staff Association. And the two groups, um, got together and reviewed, um, the salary of all of the various categories. There's thirty-five-ish different categories. Um, and we looked at the, uh, the categories and subcategories, I should say. Um, and so we look at all the data and we compare amongst twelve different schools to figure out, um, are we in line with, um, what the market is bearing in this particular case? Um, and if we, uh, you know, so we collected this data over a period of, of six months, um, analyzed the data. Um, the end result is that eighteen of the, um, eighteen of the subcategories, um, are up for a market, are recommending a market adjustment. Um, and of the ones that didn't, um, there's twenty, um, twenty-ish of them, seven of them, um, did in fact already receive market adjustments because there was a new hire, um, in that particular subcategory. And so we, um, have a leapfrog protection in our contract as well. So we adjusted everybody else that was in that category with similar experience. So, um, all in all, about, um, about half of the categories, a little more than half of the categories are receiving an adjustment. Of half the categories, it's about, um, thirty-four, thirty-five percent of all of the support staff members. So, um, tonight we are recommending that Board of Education approve the support staff market wage adjustments as presented.
Any motion?
Someone?
A second?
Second.
And Sean, this has been approved by the support staff?
Yeah, I forgot to mention that. Thank you. Uh, the Support Staff Association did in fact approve, uh, this adjustment. I believe it was on January ninth, that is. So they had taken previous action according to the protocols outlined in our.
Any other questions? Could you pull the board?
Mm-hmm. Beniosse.
Aye.
Sal.
Aye.
Corson.
Aye.
Moons.
Aye.
Tyre.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
I'm the motion carries.
Last item I have tonight is, um, approval of an identity services engine upgrade, otherwise known as ICE. Um, this is, uh, basically, uh, necessary for the stability and performance of our network. And the current system that we have in place, um, really becomes or gets to its end of useful life in, uh, July. And so, uh, we are looking to upgrade that, um, hardware and programming so that we can have our network in place, ready to go before the, uh, service that Cisco provides, um, basically expires. I know, um, we've had some, I took some questions from the board. Um, you know, I know a couple of you emailed me. Um, I did talk to Gary. In fact, I actually, uh, as Gary is a representative on our executive technology committee, um, I did ask him and to talk to Doug because sometimes it does go over my head, uh, a little bit. So I don't know, Gary, if you have anything else to add in terms of how this helps us?
Yeah, I did talk to Doug and we got into the weeds with this a little bit more to, uh, see how it fits in the overall, uh, model for cybersecurity for the district. And Doug was helpful in explaining how this has fit together. This is very consistent with, uh, the approach to securing the computing environment and is definitely a needed component. So I would, I, I have no, you gave a good explanation, Sean.
Thank you.
Is without getting into too much technical detail. But, um, yeah, I think Doug's on the right track here. This is a, something that's definitely needed.
And I think it's something that Doug always looks at and reviews for improvements, um, and looks to see how, um, we can, you know, is there some changes that we need to make more and more? Um, I will say cybersecurity is one of the things that does keep me, um, up at night. Um, so, uh, it's one of the many things that does, but cybersecurity, being on our liability co-op executive board, I see the ransom demands that are coming from people that are holding schools hostage, um, and their computer networks and it's here. Um, but, uh, tonight we are in fact, it's for another day, uh, we are recommending that the Board of Education, uh, Board of Education, excuse me, approve the identity services engine upgrade through Netrix not to exceed two hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
If no other questions, you want to pull the board?
No, we need a motion.
Well, I'm sorry. It's, we had a motion before we discovered.
Someone? Thank you.
In a second?
Second.
If you now will ask any other questions then for Sean? Okay. Would you pull the board please?
Sure. Sal.
Aye.
Corson.
Aye.
Moons.
Aye.
Tyre.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Beniosse.
Aye.
Carries seven to nothing.
Okay. And, um, the other items there are for consent, including, um, the, uh, motion to, um, oh, the first one, sorry, is destruction of closed session minutes, uh, audio and video recordings. You can see for all the dates there, release of executive session minutes, uh, and the need for confidentiality that still exists and the need for confidentiality that exists for executive session, audio sessions. So those are all for consent. You can see the FOIA request there over the course of the last month. And then that is the consent.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent of the university?
Someone?
Second.
Any questions for your consent? Would you pull the board please?
Mm-hmm. Corson.
Aye.
Moons.
Aye.
Tyre.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Beniosse.
Aye.
Sal.
Aye.
Okay. Um, Sean, just a couple of things. The first is that, uh, we're still waiting on the audit report.
Yep. So I talked to Steve about it, um, earlier today, um, and we will definitely have something to report in that.
Okay. Uh, I also included a timeline for, uh, hiring our Director of Applied Arts and, uh, Computer Science, uh, Engineering and Technology. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to let me know. Uh, you can see, uh, some of the kudos over the course of the last month, uh, including, uh, big congratulations to, uh, Tony Rival, who earned his doctorate, uh, on the University of Illinois. Yeah, Dr. Rival. Yep. Uh, you can see all the super pats that we, uh, gave out at the mid-year meeting. And thank you Troy for pulling all that together. And then, uh, the Prominent Patriot Celebration, Troy. Want to give a quick summary of that? You're always such a great host of that event.
It's one of my favorite events. Uh, we really try our best to recognize groups of kids who have come forward just to make Stevenson a better community. And so you don't, it's not necessarily the typical reasons we come together to celebrate great grades or win an event or whatever it is. It's just an opportunity to say, these kids support each other. They've done great work. Sometimes it's for, you know, really reaching out in a kind way. And the stories that we get to tell about those kids are fantastic. And, uh, if you've ever gotten to see, we have a, a, the Prominent Patriot Trophy is sort of Stanley Cup style where we keep adding all the names to it as we go. So they don't get to carry it around. Uh, but it is, it's in the trophy case that keeps our name on it. And the coveted award they get to pick home is a Patriot bobblehead. So, um, it is, it is a, a great experience. And one of those things describing, describing the work that the kids do, I almost always catch myself, like, not, trying not to get emotional because it's so cool, the things that they come forward to do in different ways.
It's a great event. So we've.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve, for helping.
And it's, it's amazing. Very heartwarming.
I'm sitting here, I'm going to show my age, um, but it was already moving, the, the award you gave for the group at the end. And I'm sitting here spacing out. I can see the, uh, the young students going up and getting the award. And I can't remember what they did, but I was so moved. Remember the, um, just look it up and share it with the group if you don't mind. Remember the last?
There were a couple that.
It was really, yeah, the things that our students do for each other. It's really moving.
The great thing about this award is that it's catching kids being good kids.
Yeah.
You know, they're just really good kids.
Yes.
But you can see the booklet. We've attached it there. So all the awards, all of the recognition. And you can read the description as well. So there was a lot of them, Steve, there.
Yeah.
And at one point we had all the kids up on stage together, which was really cool.
So the, the, the one we recognized, they actually redesigned the freshman orientation day. Took time out of their summer, you know, kids, to re, to redesign the way the kids move through the day. Um, and they came and they presented their idea to me at the beginning of the summer. I'm like, go for it. You know, I need to have it together in a month. They showed back up in a month with a full plan and it was perfect. And really gave our, the, you know, the kids as they enter Stevenson, like a different opportunity, more exciting opportunity to get involved first day.
Right. They described, it's going to describe me now. It's coming back to me. And the point was that they felt it was so sterile. When kids come in the school, it's the first time that they see the school.
Yeah.
They wanted to have an experience where they came and felt like they were a part of something.
Yeah, they really believed in Stevenson and they wanted them to get to experience Stevenson this whole way instead of coming in, you know, getting in line in the, in the gym to pick up their packet, you know, as a child. So it was really, they were really thoughtful. It was great group.
And to the final two items, um, we had our monthly, um, parent breakfast this morning at seven thirty AM. It was.
Leave it to me.
I, I.
I knew I wasn't late tonight.
Yeah.
I knew it said seven thirty C A M as I'm sitting here. I said, please, babe.
It was amazing.
Oh my God. Why are you rubbing me in it?
We had wonderful, uh, parents who were there, uh, really great conversation. Uh, we'll make sure they're there next month. So, yeah, we promise. Uh, so we got really good feedback. You know, we always do that, um, meeting and we ask the parents, um, uh, to give us, you know, feedback. We're really not interested in, you know, kind of the complimentary feedback, although it's nice. We're really more interested in the, you know, hard feedback, what can we do to get better? Every month we hear some really good feedback and so today was no exception. Uh, it was great. Um, but we do those every month. And then, um, two weeks ago, uh, we had our monthly site visit, uh, which was, you know, generally each month we get about fifty or sixty educators from around the country come to visit Stevenson. Uh, obviously Stevenson is a special place, a national reputation, gets a lot of really good, um, uh, kind of press around the country, around the world, in fact. So I just included in the board book, um, a, uh, group that was at the last site visit. Um, Troy actually had a chance to meet with this group. And they're educators from actually all over the world, uh, secretaries of education of countries, in fact.
Three of them were literally the, you know, the secretary of education for the entire country. They were coming here to experience that day, um, at Stevenson, which was just fabulous to get to meet them and talk to them about their experiences. It was.
It was pretty cool. Yeah. So it's kind of nice to come to Stevenson to see how successful she is run. So.
It's things like that where you're like, oh gosh, this place.
Pretty great. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?